Good morning, everybody. This is Nicholas Snow with Promo Homo TV with a special edition of the series Hot in Palm Springs. And I'm coming to you live from Ruth Hardy Park in Palm Springs, California. This broadcast has gone live at 11:20 a.m. on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. And in about 10 minutes, there will be live coverage right here of the official kickoff for Ron DeHart, who made public last night his candidacy for District Three Palm Springs City Council. It's a very exciting time, and this would be a good time for me to tell you that I practice advocacy journalism. What does that mean? It means that I'm going to tell you right now that I support and endorse Ron DeHart for City Council of Palm Springs. And I also, should he have other people running against him, will enthusiastically have them on my show to showcase them. But I'm on the record now as having a candidate that I'm endorsing, and that is Ron DeHart. So I'm excited to bring you all the details, and I encourage you to share the broadcast now. And if you're watching live and you have any sort of comments or questions, feel free to comment on the social media platform of your choosing, and I will have the opportunity to curate your remarks into the screen. I'm going to be back with more coverage after this. For their ongoing support of Promo Homo TV, I would like to thank DAP Health. One of their value statements, "We welcome all people, period." I'm a grateful client of DAP and have been for over 10 years. A big shout out to 849 Restaurant and Lounge, including John Pascal and Willie Ryan, longtime supporters of Promo Homo TV. I want to give a big shout out to the hashtag I love gay campaign for helping to expand Promo Homo TV across the Twitterverse, and to local media partners KG1065, Palm Springs, and their sister companies, the hashtag I love gay Palm Springs Podcast and GayDesertGuide.LGBT. I'm a proud media sponsor of Palm Springs Pride. Check them out year round at PSpride.org. And I'm proud to shine a media spotlight on the LGBTQ Community Center of the Desert. Their mission statement, "Creating vibrant community by helping LGBTQ people along their way." Find them at thecentercv.org. If you're just tuning in, we're minutes away from the official announcement from Ron DeHart of his candidacy for District Three Palm Springs City Council. Ron explains in the material released last night, "As a small business owner, a gay Hispanic father of two, I want Palm Springs to forever be a great place to live, work, and visit. I'm running because I am a resident who cares about Palm Springs and believes we can have safe streets, sound economic development, a robust tourism economy, and accessible housing while being a leader in sustainability. I am running for Palm Springs City Council," says Ron, "to represent you and make decisions that will benefit the district and city as a whole." Early endorsements include Gail Christian and Lucy de Bardelabon, Kristi Holstidge, who's currently City Council and former mayor, Jerry Keller, Jeff Coors, current member of City Council and former mayor, Joy Meredith Brown, Lisa Middleton, current member of City Council and current mayor, Ron Oden, former member of the first openly gay elected mayor of Palm Springs, actually, former Palm Springs Police Chief Brian Reyes, and Dr. Les Zendal. So those are just some of the early endorsers, and of course, me, which I've already disclosed. I am excited to bring you all of the action coming up, and I want you to share the broadcast now to your various social media. And I have this dilemma, so I'm throwing a 60th birthday party in April, but I don't know who's coming. Perhaps you can show up, and here's how. Hey, everybody. Nicholas Snow here, the founder, producer, and host of Promo Homo TV, with information on how you can score an exclusive invitation to my 60th birthday party on the patio right here at 849 Restaurant and Lounge. Promo Homo TV is free across major social media platforms and at promohomo.tv. My goal for my 60th birthday is to find 600 people in the entire world to voluntarily subscribe to Promo Homo TV for as little as $10 a month. If that's you and you subscribe on or before April 24th, 2022, you'll score an exclusive invitation to my 60th birthday party on the patio right here at 849 Restaurant and Lounge. If you're outside the area and you subscribe before that date or anytime during 2022, I'm going to send you a surprise gift in the fourth month of your support if you're unable to make the party. I'm also offering through April 25th, 2022, 50% off the business listings at Promo Homo TV, and my goal is to sell out all of my series' sponsorships as well. Promo Homo TV is connecting the circuitry of humanity by creating programming for LGBTQ plus everyone, and together, we'll continue to give the gift of Promo Homo TV to the world. For more information, simply go to patreon.com/promohomotv. That's patreon.com/promohomotv. Signing up is easy. I hope to see you here. So that's how you can make your way to my 60th birthday party. If you live outside the area and you can't make that party, I have another surprise for you if you become a patron of the show. And I actually want to thank the latest individuals who've come on board as Promo Homo TV superstars, Anne Schaefer, Aaron Terry, Bill Lavi, and Craig Prater. Kelly Marie Moreno, who's been a longtime supporter, has upgraded, and I've got to thank her for that. And Ron DeHart has actually been a patron of Promo Homo TV for quite some time, and I'm honored to collaborate with him in his role as President of Palm Springs Pride to broadcast that important event every year. While we're waiting for the official program to begin, they're going to be convening in just a moment. There's a crowd over here, which I'm going to show you shortly. I wanted to let you know that you can get Promo Homo TV merch. It's available on amazon.com or from a merch link at promohomo.tv. And also, if you're watching on YouTube, I encourage you to subscribe so you can watch future broadcasts. If you are watching on Facebook, hit the bell during the live broadcast to be notified of upcoming broadcasts. And also, I'm all over social media at Promo Homo TV. I encourage you to follow me there as well. I need to buy a little bit more time right now, at which point I'm going to turn the camera around and let you see everybody else. So here's what's coming up on this season of Notes from Hollywood kicking off in February. see what's going on. I'm going to be removing the camera from myself and putting it on the action that's happening here right now. Bear with me. Here we go. So now you have the view of what's happening, and I'm going to get a better shot of this podium. This is live, folks.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name's David Perry. Welcome to Ruth Hardy Park tonight. Please give everyone a round of applause for turning out for our big announcement. Just a little bit of housekeeping, as we all know, we are in the midst of an Omicron surge, so we really do appreciate everyone maintaining social distance. If you're not going to be wearing a mask since we're outside, please, please do stand six feet apart. I want to thank everyone for coming out on this beautiful day, especially our friends in the press. If there's anyone here from the media that has not yet identified themselves, please raise your hand. And afterwards, Ron will be taking questions over to the left. So now, without further ado, the man of the hour, please welcome to the microphone, Ron DeHart.
Thank you, David. But actually, I'm going to have Lisa Middleton, our mayor, to come up and kick us off. So Mayor Middleton.
And for the record, I am now testing negative. It is truly a pleasure to be here this morning on such a beautiful Palm Springs day to give my endorsement for Ron DeHart for Palm Springs City Council. I cannot think of anyone who is better qualified than Ron to take over and follow the incredible leadership that District Three has received from Mr. Jeff Coors. And that's an applause line, by the way. What Ron is going to bring to the Palm Springs City Council is an individual who has been a part of our community for years and has someone who has worked with neighborhood organizations, who has worked with the business community, someone who is incredibly familiar with the people and the issues of Palm Springs. He is a man who has demonstrated his ability to reach out from the LGBTQ community to the broader community that's a part of Palm Springs. He is someone who will always be thoughtful. As an individual who serves on City Council, one of the things you're always hoping for is a colleague that you can talk to and work with, and that's what Ron is going to bring to City Council. And it's that attitude of being able to listen and to work with one another that all of Ron's constituents are going to find such great favor from and such great help and support. I am enthusiastic to support Ron DeHart for City Council, and I think I get to introduce the last mayor of the city of Palm Springs and the next Assembly Member from this area, Ms. Kristi Holstidge.
Good morning, Palm Springs. It's great to be here with you this morning to celebrate our friend and community leader, Ron DeHart. I'm so proud to provide my endorsement to Ron. I've worked with him for years, serving the LGBTQ communities, communities who are deaf and hard of hearing. He's truly been an advocate for progressive values. And we know that Palm Springs values lead the state and California values lead the nation. So when Ron leads, he will continue to lead for our city and for our region on the issues we care about, housing, homelessness, climate, economic security for everyone in our region. I know Ron can do that for us, and I'm so proud to support him and be here and celebrate with you all today. Thank you.
Well, for those who don't live in District Three, welcome to our beautiful park here. We love Ruth Hardy Park, and you know, I've lived in District Three for most of the last 20 years and now as a longtime resident, still council member for District Three. I can't tell you how thrilled I was as I was thinking about not running again to talk to Ron and know that he wanted to run. Ron's experience, you know, Ron's work ethic, I've worked with Ron before he lived in Palm Springs, at different Pride organizations, including World Pride, and all the amazing things that he's done, his leadership of the Human Rights Commission, his outreach to residents and businesses, and his ability and willingness to listen to all sides before making the decision that he believes is best for our city. And as someone who plans on living in District Three for many more decades, I couldn't think of a better person to move into this role next year than Ron DeHart. So please join me in giving a great Palm Springs District Three, welcome to my endorsed candidate for District Three, Ron DeHart.
Well, thank you, Mayor Middleton, Councilmember Holstidge, and Councilmember Coors. I truly appreciate you vouching for my authenticity and character. I promise that I'll work hard and live up to that introduction. I also thank each of you that are gathered here today, and I appreciate your early endorsements of my campaign. I welcome all of you, and thank you for standing with me today as we pursue District Three City Council seat for Palm Springs. Over many years, your support of my work in the community and endorsements have paved the way for me to be here at this podium. After serving our community for 11 years, I'm excited to announce that I'm running for Palm Springs City Council, District Three. I have filed with the city clerk formal intention to serve the residents of Palm Springs. I'm starting my campaign in the community because I care about our hometown vitality and livability. As a small business owner, gay Hispanic, father of two, I embrace our small-town atmosphere, and I want to keep our great city, the place that we all want to live and work and a place to visit. I'm running because I'm a resident who cares about keeping Palm Springs unique and believes we can have safe streets, sound economic development, a robust tourism economy, and accessible housing while being a leader in sustainability. I value vibrant and walkable neighborhoods and feel it's important that we protect our unique open spaces and parks while we make them accessible to all regardless of age, abilities, and disabilities. My service and civic engagement includes serving as the Chair of the Palm Springs Human Rights Commission. I've also been an active member of the Police Chiefs LGBTQ Outreach Advisory Committee. I've seen the struggles of homelessness, the need for mental health services, and the commitment needed to advance racial justice and ensure our streets are safe. I'm proud my candidacy is endorsed by the Palm Springs Police Officers Association and retired Police Chief Brian Reyes. I've gained a comprehensive understanding of the interests and contributions of the downtown and uptown business community through my service with the City of Palm Springs Business Transition and Reentry Task Force, and as a member of Main Street Palm Springs, the local downtown uptown Palm Springs Business Association. I'm very proud to have earned the endorsements from business owners, including Jerry Keller, Joy Brown Meredith, Tony Marchesi, Willie Wine, Harold Matzner, and Jennifer Seymour. They have all seen my work in the community and my drive to be more inclusive and to promote Palm Springs as a diverse cultural tourism destination. I'm running for Palm Springs City Council to protect the quality of life and provide the leadership in the decision-making process that will benefit the district and the city as a whole. Today, after 15 years of volunteer service focused on international human rights, I'm ready, prepared, and I'm eager to do the work for residents of District Three as their City Council representative. My service to the community shows I'm committed to doing the right job for the right reasons. The next 10 months will be a time for you to get to know me and for me to hear your concerns. I'm not a politician, and I don't have a special interest agenda. I do believe effective government leadership reflects the people it serves. People like business leaders Gail Christian and Lucy de Bardelabon, former commissioners like Denise Chappelle, Al Jones, Les Young, faith leaders like Reverend Bonita Ramsey, Rabbi Lazar, those who've lived in Palm Springs for decades, and those who have moved here during COVID, like filmmakers Emmers Cooper and Donald Brophy. I'm proud to have earned the early endorsements from each of these community members. The people and all of you make Palm Springs the city we love. Together, we can balance the character of our city with the needs of our residents and workforce. I bring diverse skills, perspectives, and proven leadership to City Council and the community. I'm committed to working hard and having a voice at the table and being an effective council member for you. Thank you for joining with us today, and I look forward to seeing you on the campaign trail. So David, I think we're going to have one-on-one interviews next?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you all. I appreciate you all coming out.
So that's how you can make your way to my 60th birthday party. If you live outside the area and you can't make that party, I have another surprise for you if you become a patron of the show. And I actually want to thank the latest individuals who've come on board as Promo Homo TV superstars, Anne Schaefer, Aaron Terry, Bill Lavi, and Craig Prater. Kelly Marie Moreno, who's been a longtime supporter, has upgraded, and I've got to thank her for that. And Ron DeHart has actually been a patron of Promo Homo TV for quite some time, and I'm honored to collaborate with him in his role as President of Palm Springs Pride to broadcast that important event every year. While we're waiting for the official program to begin, they're going to be convening in just a moment. There's a crowd over here, which I'm going to show you shortly. I wanted to let you know that you can get Promo Homo TV merch. It's available on amazon.com or from a merch link at promohomo.tv. And also, if you're watching on YouTube, I encourage you to subscribe so you can watch future broadcasts. If you are watching on Facebook, hit the bell during the live broadcast to be notified of upcoming broadcasts. And also, I'm all over social media at Promo Homo TV. I encourage you to follow me there as well. I need to buy a little bit more time right now, at which point I'm going to turn the camera around and let you see everybody else. So here's what's coming up on this season of Notes from Hollywood kicking off in February. So there we have it. Let's see if I can get another vantage point. These are the people who have gathered here. Once again, the news of this event just happened last night. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn the camera around and, oops, not off, but around, just one moment, and conclude. I was hoping to go up and talk to people, but they're very engaged with each other, and they're also all masked, which is an important thing. So let's go here to the camera setting, front camera, perfect. So Palm Springs is a place like no other, and there was a time in recent years where the entire City Council was LGBTQ, and now it's comprised of members of the community and allies as well in terms of the LGBTQIA+ community. And it is an amazing place to live, and it isn't lost on me for my viewers around the world that I was able to wake up this morning, listen to a radio station called KG, hear local news about our community, and then come to a park in which Ron DeHart has announced his run as openly gay Hispanic father of two endorsed by over half the existing City Council and the current mayor and former mayors. It's just really a magical place, and I'm honored that in the series Hot in Palm Springs on Promo Homo TV, I can continue to tell the stories of this spectacular destination. So I'm just so excited that you continue to support Promo Homo TV. And if you didn't tune in at the top of the broadcast, I would like to let you know one more time how to attend my 60th birthday party, and here are the details about that. Hey, everybody. Nicholas Snow here, the founder, producer, and host of Promo Homo TV, with information on how you can score an exclusive invitation to my 60th birthday party on the patio right here at 849 Restaurant and Lounge. Promo Homo TV is free across major social media platforms and at promohomo.tv. My goal for my 60th birthday is to find 600 people in the entire world to voluntarily subscribe to Promo Homo TV for as little as $10 a month. If that's you and you subscribe on or before April 24th, 2022, you'll score an exclusive invitation to my 60th birthday party on the patio right here at 849 Restaurant and Lounge. If you're outside the area and you subscribe before that date or anytime during 2022, I'm going to send you a surprise gift in the fourth month of your support if you're unable to make the party. I'm also offering through April 25th, 2022, 50% off the business listings at Promo Homo TV, and my goal is to sell out all of my series' sponsorships as well. Promo Homo TV is connecting the circuitry of humanity by creating programming for LGBTQ plus everyone. One of the things that I find is amusing, but I'm not worried because you're such a good multitasker, is that this election coincides almost precisely with the presentation of Palm Springs Pride, of which you are president. You're going to be pretty busy this year.
You know, it's always a busy weekend, but the good thing is we've got great people like you that are on the Pride Committee that do a great job, and there's no reason we will not expect you to do the same great job again this year.
One more final question. How come Palm Springs is a place like no other?
Well, it's paradise. Look at the mountains behind me. Look, this is just a beautiful place to be. We're a friendly city. We're a diverse city. We're a welcoming city. And this is where you want to be to vacation, to live, work, and retire.
Well, thank you, Ron. Have a great day. So there we have it. Let's see if I can get another vantage point. These are the people who have gathered here. Once again, the news of this event just happened last night. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn the camera around and... Oops, not off, but around. Just one moment. And conclude, I was hoping to go up and talk to people, but they're very engaged with each other, and they're also all masked, which is an important thing. So let's go here to the camera setting. Front camera. Perfect. So... Palm Springs is a place like no other, and there was a time in recent years where the entire City Council was LGBTQ. And now it's comprised of members of the community and allies as well, in terms of the LGBTQIA+ community. And it is an amazing place to live. And it isn't lost on me, for my viewers around the world, that I was able to wake up this morning, listen to a radio station called KK, hear local news about our community, and then come to a park in which Ron DeHart has announced his run as openly gay Hispanic father of two, endorsed by over half the existing City Council and the current mayor and former mayors. It's just really a magical place, and I'm honored that in the series Hot in Palm Springs on Promo Homo TV, I can continue to tell the stories of this spectacular destination. So I'm just so excited that you continue to support Promo Homo TV. And if you didn't tune in at the top of the broadcast, I would like to let you know one more time how to attend my 60th birthday party, and here are the details about that. Hey, everybody. Nicholas Snow here, the founder, producer, and host of Promo Homo TV, with information on how you can score an exclusive invitation to my 60th birthday party on the patio right here at 849 Restaurant and Lounge. Promo Homo TV is free across major social media platforms and at PromoHomo.TV. My goal for my 60th birthday is to find 600 people in the entire world to voluntarily subscribe to Promo Homo TV for as little as $10 a month. If that's you and you subscribe on or before April 24, 2022, you'll score an exclusive invitation to my 60th birthday party on the patio right here at 849 Restaurant and Lounge. If you're outside the area and you subscribe before that date or anytime during 2022, I'm going to send you a surprise gift in the fourth month of your support if you're unable to make the party. I'm also offering through April 25, 2022, 50% off the business listings at Promo Homo TV, and my goal is to sell out all of my series sponsorships as well. Promo Homo TV is connecting the circuitry of humanity by creating programming for LGBTQ plus everyone, and together, we'll continue to give the gift of Promo Homo TV to the world. For more information, simply go to patreon.com/promohomotv. That's patreon.com/promohomotv. Signing up is easy. I hope to see you here. Thank you so much for watching. By the way, almost daily and sometimes twice daily episodes of Promo Homo TV are coming your way beginning February 4, 2022, so stay tuned for that. Thank you, as always, for watching, and I will see you next time.